And the area of the right-of-way for the streets, that'll be in mobility services. And then, public safety services are basically the cost of doing business for fire and EMS and the cost of the inter-local agreement with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. And so that's sort of the way we're doing it. Acreage for mobility, acreage and developed area for culture and recreation and for public safety services, it'll be their standard of response, which is a 95% response time of seven minutes. Let me stop there and see if you have any questions about level of service. Excellent. Then the next is the mobility plan. So this is the plan that's going to underlie the mobility fee. What we'll be looking at is the, what I call the Duane Plan, the 2002 master plan that was done by Jones Edmonds, HDR and Duane Plater Ziberg. That was something that we handed out to you earlier, I think it was last year. So we've had a little hiatus in terms of looking at that, so I want to bring that back to your attention. We want to be looking at, there's a lot of mobility aspects in there, transportation, sidewalks, that type of thing, complete streets. And we want to extract from that everything that seems to be relevant now, so that's the what to leave in. Anything in that plan that isn't relevant or that we don't agree with, you know, now that we're almost 20 years on and probably will be by the time we get through the evaluation and appraisal. And then any additional ideas that you have, and some of those we provided, or you provided when we did the survey, and so we have those in the hopper. But, you know, it's been a couple months, things have changed. There's been a drastic change in the way that we have responded and now who we consider to be essential service personnel, so those things may have a different impact on what you're looking at as regards also the potential for an internal transit system, the idea of maybe having some parking garages, all of those things I think we need to look at in a planning sense going forward. And those will inform the capital improvements plan that the city staff is working on now in conjunction with the budget. And then finally, I want to have you think about between now and our next meeting in July, how to best reach out to the public? You know, do we, do we partner with the Chamber of Commerce for instance? Or, you know, how do we get the most involvement so that we get the most people involved in deciding what our mobility plan should be? And the mobility plan then will be the basis for the proportionate share development fees moving forward and also the basis for what improvements we hope to be doing in the next five to 10 years. Do we want to have a website presence? I think that may be, given our COVID experience, something that could be very useful to the public in terms of allowing them to engage. Do we want to plan for an open house, for a town hall where people can come and speak if we stay open and continue to reopen? And any other ideas that you might have? And I'll take any questions and throw that open to you for your conversation and discussion.
Any questions so far?
Yeah, and I think you have that hard copy and also digitally and, you know, it's just, well, you know, it was a quarter of a million dollar project, we should take from it all the low-hanging fruit we possibly can. And, and I think it will help us, you know, in terms of ideating different ideas or additional ideas that we can add to that.
If the commissioners are speaking, would they please turn their microphone on?
We will.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'll be here all night.
Thank you, Jerry. Well, that was short and sweet. Usually you're a little more talkative than that.
I have no PowerPoint.
Make a note, no more PowerPoints in the future. Okay, on to old business. Agenda item number six. I don't believe we have any old business. I don't believe we have any old business. Do we have agenda item number seven, administrative staff presentation? Looks like there's nothing we have this evening for that.
No.
Agenda item number eight, planning commission member discussion. I think we have some topics that we would like to talk about.
Correct.
I know one, the residents in my area were asking why there was no public hearing or whatever for the new building being built on 131st. And some of the traffic pattern, they were asking who approved it? And I did, since it was not quasi-judicial, I talked to Linda about it and I think you had, were gonna said that it was approved by the engineer? Is that correct, or?
Yes, the traffic patterns were, the traffic patterns impacted not only 131st but also DOT. So they had to have approval from both DOT and then the site plan process, through the site plan process, the engineer that was working for the city at the time. The plan development and the arrangement or the agreement that allowed for the access and its location of the driveway and the design and everything were approved about eight, nine years ago. The first portion of it was approved many years before that. It was all actually part of a single PD, so the only thing that we could do when it came back to us for this second building was make sure that it technically met the site plan criteria. All the access to the property had already been assured through the development agreement.
So there's no problems with it? Everything was approved? Everything's good to go?
It was approved and I, since it was a plan development, there was some community hearing on it, which was fortunate because when it came back for the site plan, of course, we had not come through here and designed a public hearing process for site plans yet. So there was way back in history input on it, but none of us were here for that. Of course, it was documented. And then, as I said, all we could do at that point was take the existing site plan criteria and made sure that they met the criteria on the site plan itself, but they already had approval to enter in that location. And it's a very tricky site, as you said, it's very close, the entrance is very close to Gulf Boulevard and there's going to be some stacking challenges there. And, you know, since it was originally approved, traffic and access has changed a lot because properties around it have changed and just the amount of traffic overall has increased. But it did technically meet all of the codes, yes. We are still reviewing the site because it's not yet received a CO and there are some improvements that still are underway, including all the landscaping, some of the drainage, little bit of the traffic pattern, including the access driveway and its exact location and width and all. We still have to fix that. And then there's concerns about the drainage, the outfall that's right there at the entryway, making sure that that drains and that the outfall and pipes are cleared out appropriately.
Okay, it looks like we have another commission member, Robin, is joining us. Can we get her signed in, or? I know you live right there, we were just discussing the building on 131st. One more chair down, right there, that one. No, that one, that one, what?
Yep.
That way.
No, it's right there.
Oh, is it? Okay, my bad. Yep, right here.
Somewhere there.
So we're in, we're actually in the planning commission member open discussion if you had any comments on the building being built on 131st, on the corner. We just had the little, the city was looking into some things. I've had a lot of requests from neighbors on how the traffic is going to flow in there, but I think they're pretty much did according to what they were supposed to do and it was approved by DOT and the engineer. Yes, if you do, we've all, you guys have comments, or anybody else have comments?
I have one. So with the development agreement, there wasn't a timeframe on it, something like the town center where they had to start construction at a certain period of time, or there was with this or not?
Yes, there was with this. I don't remember exactly what it was, we looked at that before they brought the second building in. Most of the ones that were negotiated during that time period had like a 30-year time build out. 15-year minimum was the shortest I've seen on any of them, but some as long as 30 years.
Is there any more hanging out there like that?
No, I think that, that and Gulf Grill were the other two that were really long-term plans that had been approved many years before. So I think we've gotten to the point where we'll be doing site plan review and new PD review on anything that comes in.
So no more surprises?
Well, I hope not. We have several more buildings that are associated with the town center, but I don't really want to talk about that in any detail because there's always likelihood that that, because it hasn't been built yet, will still come back to you for amendment or review as a quasi judicial item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've lived right there, too. We're kind of all closer together commissioners in our neighborhood and I've had many concerns. In fact, I've invited the city manager has come out, I've talked to Linda numerous times, Jerry came out and saw what's going on. I mean, it is so close to the house at the very beginning, the townhome at the very beginning of our development. They've hit the townhouse in construction. We are extremely concerned. I mean, these are all things I've talked to Linda about landscaping, the traffic coming out, the traffic already isn't, you guys talked about that? Oh, well, the traffic's a nightmare on 131st because no one stops at Pelican Way. They just come to the end of the street and turn left and go right out, they never stopped. And, I mean, I can't see us with that ramp coming down, all of us that come out here, I mean, what's it going to be like? It's, it's going to be terrible. And the ramp is so short, we've seen the construction going on and it just, it's, it's very nerve-wracking, very nerve-wracking to us. And in our little development, we have a pool with a fence, with a lock, the people, my husband is chairman of the HOA, he buys locks, people cut them continually to swim in our pool. They used to, the person that ran the marina used to let all the marina people come in our pool, so that stopped. We tried locks and, I mean, we don't know, the locks been cut that's down at the end, I don't know what's going to happen when that comes. So there's a lot of issues that are very concerning for us. So, and I know I've kind of worn Linda out on this.
It's not a matter of our being worn, worn out. If there are functional problems with the site plan, which we were limited because the plan development was agreed upon, including the relationship between the buildings even before your building was built. So that, that relationship, that six-foot spread, as tight as it is, was always part of the approved plan. And we worked with them before they started building to try to mitigate, make sure that they put back things like the landscaping and the walkway and all of that. The reason I'm sitting relatively quiet is this conversation has changed into being a property owner issue, and I'm not sure that really what the planning commission as a group can do about it, if you're, see if you're recommending some sort of a policy change, if we were recommending a, it, that won't really help the situation. We're really at a point of code enforcement and also of your enforcing your relationships within the plan development because the property is all jointly held and, you know, you have to take your, your complaints to the property owner and deal with them in a civil matter because there's only so much the city can do in terms of like, you know, controlling the access to the pool and things like, like that. We can enforce crime issues and complaints, but in terms of getting a system in place that protects you all on an ongoing basis, it's something that you're going to have to pull together and negotiate with the other property owners on and hopefully come up with a system because there's not, there's only so much citywide policy that, that can address that.
Correct. The pool really doesn't have anything to do with the new building and that's what we're discussing, the new building.
And I'd like to say it was me calling the city all the time because the contractors were parking all over the street. I called and alerted the city because these, they were parking on both sides of 131st. The, the taco bus was coming all the time there. I mean, it, it was a madhouse, people couldn't even turn into the street. And that, the city did help because nothing's going to happen with the builder and us.
Well, those are, those are important conversations to be had while we talk about policy because there may be things that we need to do about how we administer site plan construction and what policy we have for parking and access to sites during construction. Those are policy issues that we can say, well, at least if we can't, we can't go back and fix these things this time, but we have a sense for what can happen if we don't have the right policy in place. So we can make suggestions on places in the code where we may need to make policies stronger in other places or citywide. That's definitely something that the commission should be talking about.
And, and I think that's what I was getting at is that, I think everybody was taken by surprise that the construction just started. And even though it was approved, you know, however many years ago, and I've been on the planning commission for 13 years and I don't remember that coming before us, that it would have been nice if the city or the commissioner from that district would have warned everybody that, hey, you know, there's nothing we can do, but this construction is going to start. Because we've been through, you know, many people are divided over buildings coming in and I think it's a beautiful building and it's much better than the boat lot that was there before. And it, it's really an improvement, the landscaping's coming in looking good, the paint, it's a nice building. I think people were just concerned that all of a sudden here's this building going up and, you know, like Robert asked, are there more out there? You know, like what else is sitting out there? And if you say there's nothing out and we're going to change the policy that, you know, they have to at least update the citizens, hey, this thing's been out there 20 years, but they have 30 years to build it. I think we should warn the residents that, hey, this is coming. I mean, I think that that's fair.
Definitely. Now, as Ms. Blasky will verify, I met with the homeowners group three different times before they built anything to make sure the site plan was no more of an impact than it had to be. We, we went over all the detail, which is why we actually had to make some additions and changes to it to add in landscaping to make, in fact, they weren't even required initially to put back the walkway or the landscaping between the two buildings and that was the city calling them in and telling them we had talked to the owners and we were very concerned about the people already living there. So we did actually have several meetings with the, the representatives from the owners' group to make sure they knew what was coming and to try to mitigate impacts. But it is very close. And it's hard, as you know, it's hard to construct that close together without some impacts, for sure. And then there are issues that you have to address in the relationship between the property owners and its management, definitely. But we, we did try to get everybody involved. It's been a rough process, regulating something that was approved 16 years earlier is a little bit touchy. There's whole different standards in place now.
Speaking to the process that Robin brought up about, you know, cars parked here and there and whatever and workmen parked, trucks and things, is there something in our codes that prohibits or permits that? I see a lot of times on, on public, private properties that are being worked on where they're blocking public roads with equipment, trucks, whatever, and, you know, and not to pick on this particular project, but it's a fresh example. The last couple of days, they've got Gulf Boulevard coned off on the outside northbound lane. That's not a, I mean, does that have to go through DOT to get approved to be blocked off or they just stick cones up there and do it? Because, you know, we got a lot of traffic out there and people are coming down from the bridge and, and I'm just using that as an example, I've seen it all over, all over town.
And yet, and quite often we see it, too, after you do and, or before you do and we go out there and make them take the cones.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Because they don't have approval to do that. We had to do that with the cranes on this project several times.
Yeah.
Because they did not have the right to plant them out in Gulf Boulevard.
Yeah, there were several times where they
Several times, yes.
Swing out into that outside lane and they cone it off.
We were, we were out there a lot, making them move things around and, and stay out of the, and also to fence it off because we saw people walking their children directly under the crane, crossing over the fence line and, you know, I mean, when you put the fence up, you'd think that they would worry about that, but here's strollers under these big booming cranes up. So it, we were trying to keep an eye on it throughout, but there, we do have a problem throughout town with people just stopping their car on the side of the road somewhere and deciding that's good enough parking for them. Some places have towing prob, you know, policies and we don't have that in the, in the code, that's an option. I haven't discussed that with the city manager. I don't know how he would feel about that, but we do have a problem with people just leaving their cars places and we do have to enforce all the time to get people to move along. The public works department has the ability to designate certain areas even temporarily as no parking when it appears that there's a problem or a pressure for even if it's just a certain period of time or a certain condition. We've had a problem with the fact that we had a lot of, actually quite a bit of construction going on there, you know, even if it's just small projects, and there's just not a lot of parking down there. And a lot of the parking that was being used for construction projects was actually not even legal parking lots, like the lots along Pelican Lane.
Yeah.
Usually what the big construction projects will do is they will make arrangements somewhere like at a, they used to make arrangements at a Holiday Isle or the Holton property to park and then bus their people over, their construction crews over to a site because there's not enough parking. And that's something that we're really going to have to look at anytime we have a big project going. It's, we, we try to be conscious of that and find out ahead of time where they plan to park. The city has even designated specific lots for construction parking and then the construct, the contractors don't use that lot. So, you know, it, it's a hard thing to police. We can look at the policy on that, temporary parking or construction-related parking or just generally how we enforce on the roads again. You'll recall, I've had the parking section in front of you at least three times since I got here. We seem to be tweaking it a little bit as we go every year.
It's small potato stuff, but there are instances where on, on that street, I can tell you there were times where there were so many vehicles parked there that people couldn't
Even get through.
Get through the street, creating a, like a log jam with people's back bumpers sticking out on a Gulf Boulevard.
We also had the cars parking directly in front of the driveways there, or in front of the mailbox and
Yeah.
We were, we're dealing with that.
That's probably more of a community police officer issue, you know, creating a hazard of traffic.
Exactly.
Like that, more than code violation, I mean, you can't legislate everything.
And when it's construction, it is temporary, you know, so you got to have a little bit of leadway for
Oh, for sure.
For the construction, but, you know, yes, I'm more concerned about the long-term U-turn if you're heading south to pull up the ramp and if you're heading in, heading north, you're going to have to make a, a right and a quick left to get in there. And if there's one car sitting there, you're going to zip their bumper to get in or you got to wait. And then if there, anybody else is coming in, like Mike said, they're backed up on Gulf Boulevard, so we'll see.
We'll see how it goes.
If it's approved, it's approved.
I'll let you know.
I'll, I'll let them know.
Go down that street three times a day.
I have another question, thank you, Mr. Chairman. How do we go about deciding if we are going to put a light on 131st to go out on Gulf Boulevard? I mean, do we have to have like a traffic impact study type thing because? to have like a traffic impact study type thing? Because now, even in busy times, and you guys can verify this too, sometimes it, it takes a long time. You've got to wait for someone down at John's Pass to walk across the street so you get the flashing yellow to stop for cars now. And that's no one in that building on the corner yet.
Yes. There, there is, the city has no authority to decide to put a light on Gulf. We could not. It would have to require FDOT's permission and they have specific standards as to the separation between lights. And they're very, very unlikely to approve a stoplight on Gulf that close to the bridge.
It would back up traffic to the bridge. It wouldn't work. Yep.
So what do we do?
We will have, we will have to monitor traffic and engineer whatever solutions are available to us. And I'll refer it again to the Public Works Department and have them come back and explain to you what they think the options are and what can be done in terms of maneuvering. It's a, it's a tricky spot because as you said, it's not just coming in on 131st. Then you have the turning into Madeira Bay and then you've got Pelican Way and the turn up the road there. You know, there's people coming from a lot of different directions. And then also you have the little apartment complex there that backed directly out of their spots into the road that wouldn't nor, that wouldn't be approved today. Those old time patterns complicate things because we know now that's not a good idea, especially that close to the intersection with Gulf. So there are a lot of complexities there. I will ask, I'll work with Public Works and we'll come back and talk about, have them talk about how the traffic patterns are supposed to be working and have, ask them, you know, what are the options for dealing with the situation there? Maybe get them to do some counts and assess the situation so that they know exactly what you're dealing with. And it is going to change because once there are people in that building.
Oh.
It'll, it'll be a whole different story.
Can, could we facilitate that for your request? Public Works through our government right here.
Yes, it would be us.
So can you facilitate that so they could start looking at that? Because that's going to take some time, I would imagine.
I would, I would suggest that the Planning Commission take a little vote to ask for a presentation and some analysis from Public Works to maybe look at that area and if there are other areas along Gulf that you think is not specifically related to just one development or just that whole district. Because there's more than just that one intersection. As I said, it, there's a lot of patterns and conflict, potential conflicts with the location. So you could ask for a referral or make a referral to me. We'll come back with some.
Well, would someone like to make a motion for that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that our Public Works start examining our 131st Avenue intersection with Gulf Boulevard or any other neighboring streets that might be experiencing difficulty.
I would include 129th in there.
Yeah, should we be specific?
Because the traffic is backed up on 129th as well.
Oh. And that whole, let me, if we could request Public Works to come to prepare some study on how traffic from 129th to 131st will have, will flow going back to Gulf Boulevard onto those streets in a safe, orderly fashion?
Or just have a man analyze what's going on and what the options are. It'll all be part of your, your planning process over the course of the next two years anyway because it's, it's all tied into that Dewanee Plan. That's one of the areas that's kind of designated for a certain amount of redevelopment anyway. So it ties in very well with what you're going to be studying and we would have to get some input from them anyhow. So it will just be a matter of scheduling based on my coordination through the city manager's office.
It may not even be a problem, you know? So we'll wait and see, but we might as well have, take our motion. Do we have someone with a second?
Chairman, can I maybe add something to that?
Yes, sir, Robert.
Just hadn't been able to squeak in here. On, I know Gulf Boulevard is a state road.
Yes.
Does the city have any influence on speeds on that? Because one of the things, one of, one of the bigger pictures is 35, nothing happens until the people hit 45 for enforcement. So it's basically a 44 mile an hour speed limit on Gulf Boulevard. So if we had it at 30, it would be 39 instead of 44. If people slowed down a little bit, it might be a little bit easier for people to get out onto the road.
Similar to the discussion we've had about 150th over the bridge.
Correct.
Yes.
And then, yes, very similar to that one. I know other cities have reduced their speed limits.
Mm-hmm.
There's two. And then, and some of the thought process of the, of the city engineer or whoever's going to look at it is 140th. And this is one that I've seen many people almost get run over.
Mm-hmm.
When the person pushes the walk button, they have four seconds before the man goes away and they get a red hand. And when drivers see that red hand, they think they have the right of way and not the person walking across the street. So they don't even get halfway across the first lane of traffic that they're trying to get across for, or it turns red. Is there a potential for when somebody pushes the crosswalk button, that we do the flashing lights? Because that time limit is the same as the flashing lights. From the time it goes from the little man to the countdown, 19 and on down, it's 24 seconds or so. So would it be possible to put yellow flashing lights when people are going to cross that instead of having the countdown and the little man? Because we have those all up and down Gulf.
I'll include that as part of the analysis because I can't answer off top of my head.
Does that make, does that make sense?
I do understand.
Because people think when, as soon as that red hand comes up, whether it's got numbers blinking down or not, they have the right of way. And they just, I've seen carriages almost get hit, people, their wagons. They cuss people out that are in the sidewalk or in the walkway. It's really strange.
Yes, those are, there's going to be, there's will be, there's going to be FDOT standards and approvals, but definitely we'll have them address that and come back and explain what the options are and what, what the standards that FDOT would be looking for. For the trap, trap for speeds and for crosswalks, especially those locations.
Yeah. Because the city is the whole thing. The 150th, which they talked about before, bringing the speed limit down is to reduce it so, because we're going to have a lot of foot traffic, right?
Correct. And we, and there was a talk just generally, as you said, about how, how far people are over the speed limit before you start forcing and so bringing it down.
The sheriffs admitted that they don't do anything until it's 10 over. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we get a new, simple motion to incorporate all of that from somebody?
My understanding of the motion is that you would like to make a referral back for planning and public work analysis to look at circulation in the area from 131st back towards John's Pass along Gulf Boulevard and the, the associated streets and avenues back into the neighborhoods to look at speed, access, maneuvers, conflicts, and the potential of different kinds of crossing mechanism for the protection of pedestrians.
Second.
Perfect.
Let's go to the vote.
Good thing she did it.
That's exactly what she said. I don't know how you got all that written down. That was exactly what she said.
It's in the record.
Yes.
Commissioner Blasky?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappaport?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Sounds like the motion passes. Okay. Another topic that was brought up to me that I said I would bring up in open discussion is on Pelican Lane, the approved parking that's in the field. There are now commercial fishing boats that have housed themselves there.
Yep.
And they're working overnight and no one seems to, in the neighborhood, understand how they've, or, they're, they're very smart and they're not living aboard. They're just staying there, working. And they've got generators running, lights running. And I think the city has been contacted, but I said I would bring it up as, under open discussion to see where we're at with, if they're approved to be there or are they, we're looking at moving them or at least regulating them to not be working at all hours and weekends and.
Right. Those are not, you know, we don't refer to those as fields. We refer to them as empty residential lots. And they are not approved for parking. We, the only place that we allow a freestanding parking as a principal use is by special exception in John's Pass, which we just recently amended. As you may recall, it came through to you. That's the only place. So freestanding parking lots are not allowed as a principal use anywhere else in the city. Those lots were, they've torn, over the years, they've torn down the residential uses and they were vacant and they just stayed open for a long time. And then they started gradually picking up parking somewhere in the, halfway through 2016 and it got bigger and bigger. And then they put in parking machines. When I got here in August of 2017, I think by October, I had called them in and told them, you're not supposed to be parking there because the zoning doesn't allow it. They, the city had been issuing business permits to anybody who applied for one without checking the zoning up to that point. So I had to initiate new procedures to make sure that anytime somebody applied for a business license, we had to check zoning and parking and other things that would weigh in on whether the space could be used for the business that was requested. And this is also for expansions of business because they'd also been expanding businesses all over without checking parking. But those lots are, are three lots. So they can be used for residential purposes or for hotels. They can have up to 20% non-residential use in association with a residential use on the property. But as you know, they're very narrow lots or shallow and they're limited in development to basically the three stories we allow everywhere without a PD. And so we, we have notified them and that, that they had to vacate from the parking. And also, the only docks that are permitted in a commercial district are those that are accessory to the permitted residential use. So if there is no residential use on the property, you cannot use the docks. Docks are only accessory. So those are also being cited. And I believe that the first enforcement on those have gone out all the letters, citations, and the first hearing's coming up this month with the special magistrate. So they should be posted, actually. If there's posting out there and the neighbors have concern, they are welcome to attend the magistrate meetings now that we can all gather together and make their concerns known. But at any rate, we have notified them. It's, it's not just a matter, either of those being used as Marina, they're being used as a commercial Marina. So it's not just the fact that they're violating the accessory definition. They're actually violating the zoning altogether. You can't conduct commercial activity off of those. Those are commercial fleet boats and they cannot be maintained and they cannot be harbored there.
It's also the new launching place for the canoe and kayak rental.
Oh, no. Well, we've been following that around. I'll check on that because we, that, we did get a request to allow that to be, that business to be operated out of the area where the candy kitchen is, but it cannot be because it's not permitted as a standalone use there for the rental boats either. So we have other issues. Certain kinds of businesses can only operate in certain zoning districts. That may not be where the place is available for them. It's unfortunate, but we have a limited amount of space here in town that's designated for certain commercial uses. And the community has standards. That's what those zoning laws are. It's not for us to decide, oh gee, we really feel bad about that. And we can understand somebody's angst over not being able to run the business they want in a certain location, but this is the community standard. If people want to change the standard, they are welcome to come in and request a text change and sponsor it and take it through the process and come to the planning commission, then go to the city commission and ask for change. And I have let them know that, but no one has done so. So they will have to either use the property the way it is currently designated within the restrictions that are allowed in the code, or cease and desist, or they will be fined. And the magistrate will imply, impose a fine on a daily basis until the, until the matter is resolved.
Is that why the boat rental left behind the candy kitchen?
Yes.
Montunes?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a lot of upset people in the canal on that one.
It's not allowed.
Pardon?
It wasn't allowed on that site.
It wasn't allowed?
Uh-uh.
They actually, we had a two and a half foot pup from, indeed, the gut, it's back sliced from.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, it's, yeah, that's a whole nother issue. But, you know, the environmental issues are really concerns too. But the, the other issue is that sometimes even when something was allowed, there's not necessarily room for it. You can't just keep adding one more use into a building or into a complex because each one has a traffic impact and a parking impact. And if the site won't hold that much parking, you can't expand the use. You can't add something new there. You know, one thing would have to go for another to come in. And sometimes even that's not enough. It depends on how much impact the specific use has. So we've had to create a whole new approach to make sure that we're implementing the zoning code and the development code each time we look at a change in business.
I would like to add that area that our chairman was discussing. There were, now granted, times were different, but there were vans parked in that that were literally squatters, squatter people.
Yes.
A man turned his home, built a bar, had a TV every night. He was selling, I mean, it was, everybody was going over there, all the people from Marina. He was operating a bar in the back of the bamboo. I, I think there's an element that is living there. They're still living in RVs there. And it just needs incredible policing until, and I don't know where that, if the city could help there. I mean, you gotta.
It's a constant effort, honestly.
It's constant there.
Enforcing the code is, it's an all day, every day thing. And, you know, when we're, they're, they're driving around and they're forcing one place and they're finding things of paperwork and there's evidence. Because when you enforce code, it's a policing effort. So there's a specific way and a specific amount of evidence that has to be collected before we can enforce. So it's a time consuming and human resource consuming process. And we don't have much of a budget for that. We don't have a lot of people involved. And there, the amount of staff that's here at the city is spread pretty thin trying to handle everything that is required for the various functions. But you're right, it takes a lot of constant, it's a, it's a vacation kind of place here, you know? I mean, you don't know who's coming into town and the people are going to look for a way around limitations.
Well, on the other side, we live on the Marina side. On the other side of the street, they have told me they're constantly having people sleep in their backyards.
Oh, gosh.
Because there's squatters. They're, they're living, and I wish somebody could get rid of those RVs in the back. People are still living them. We, at our home, had a felony burglary. They're coming, yeah, walked into our home, into our garage and stole our bicycles when we were there. There are so many people coming. There are so many people coming down.
Yes, there's always gonna be.
It's bad.
An effort of, one thing I will note, and this is important since you're obviously taking complaints from citizens throughout the community. And a lot of you are out during the day, I know, and you have contacts. I'm surprised at the number of times people will call and tell me, we've repeatedly filed complaints with the sheriff's office about this and we call all the time. And then I checked the records and there have not been any calls. There, there are no recorded calls from the sheriff's office and they keep a complete record of everything. You know, people complaining to each other and their neighbors, that doesn't do it. And, or hearing that everybody else is saying, oh, yeah, I called, doesn't mean it actually happened either. So if people, we know, people sleeping in your backyard, we don't get a lot of calls like that. So they gotta, they've gotta call the police when something like that happens. I, I, I'm sure you called when your bikes were, were taken and I'm, a lot of us have suffered that kind of things over the years. And, and it's really hard to recoup that kind of loss, really, for them to keep track of that kind of crime and track everything down. But, but again, I, I hear it all the time. You know, we call, there's all this, we've had all this trouble and we're not getting any help. And then we check the police records and nothing.
I said that to a rep.
I got a call about a bar the other day and they said, we've been, you know, it's really disruptive and everybody's upset and we never get any help. One call in two years. You know, that's, that's not gonna do it. I mean, there's almost no bar open on the face of the earth that didn't have at least one call over two years. It's definitely not considered a major, you know, source of turmoil within the community. So people have got to take responsibility to stay active. A lot of what we do in code enforcement because of the limited staff, just like in policing, relies on people reporting what they see. You, I mean, people are responsible for the care of their own property. That's how, that's how community.
A resident say that to me. They said, I said, well, you should call the city and complain about that. And he said, well, I don't wanna be the bad guy. That's what you're for.
Right.
You're the volunteer for that. You know, you're, you're, I'm coming to you. You're, you know, you're, I'm, I'm appointed. I'm not elected, you know?
Right, and.
So they definitely complain and don't really wanna get involved.
You're not elected. You have actual, kind of limited access.
Yes.
Just through us. And all you can do with us is make referrals. Now, as a board, you, you can look at the code and make suggested changes and you can refer those to the commission and make suggestion to them. You can initiate things. But it does need to relate to the land development code and to comp planning because that's, you know, you're not in the administration of the city. And the staff, we staff to you, but we don't work for you. So you, what you can do is limited and you do want them to know that.
Yes, I do.
And there are a lot of things that, I know we've all talked about this, but people may complain to you about things they think are coming up or those things may come before you and you shouldn't be discussing them because a lot of the development issues, all the develop, real development issues are gonna be quasi judicial. So it's very important for them to either come to the meetings or they can make their comments on email because we can enter them into the record that way. They can send them in by letter or, you know, they can make calls. Even the commissioner shouldn't be discussing the details of the development, but it's really, it's important that they do participate in the process. But they should, you know, make their comments, call in and ask their questions to us, not get you involved in all that because it kinda puts you in a bad position.
It sounds like the city staff is on top of that second topic of, it sounds like you're, you're doing a great job on, you know, looking into those boats being there. So I'll let them know that you're doing what you're, what you can do.
It's been slow, I'll admit, because as you know, we had a lot of parking issues. And one of our big concerns about enforcing the parking was Madeira Bay, you know, the Barefoot Beach. Astoria was still under construction and there were cars everywhere. And also just the practice of, of allowing people to park someplace for a while. You wanted to kinda get to the end of a season and then close it out. There's all little, there's little parking spaces all over. Sometimes people were actually charging parking on public right of way. So if, if you can charge for it, you can probably find it there.
So I have, it kinda reverts back to where we started tonight with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And what the public wants for, for you as enforcement. How much effort do they want the city to put in enforcement of codes and stuff within the city? So that's a financial obligation.
It's, it's a really good point you're making, yes. When you decide that you want additional service, you gotta figure it's gonna cost some money. And when you want to cut your budget, you've gotta decide what programs are going or, you know, cause there's.
Enforcement or no enforcement or, you know, only blatant versus non blatant? So one of the, one of the, just an example, and it happens more often than not, and I've called DEC, the National Resource Center, is the Madeira Beach Seafoods boats continually dump their bilges into the bay. And what I get back from them, if it's still there in two days, give us a call again.
Wow.
And I don't know about who else lives on the water, but it, there's a sheen at least every week from those fishing vessels. And I don't know how to go about.
Okay. We do have obligations to research and update our data on exactly what conditions are, are, and operations, what situations we're dealing with environmentally in the community when we do our update of the comp plan. Unfortunately, you have updated your plan several times since the original plan was adopted in 89, I think. But not updated the data and analysis. So we are undertaking review now to see exactly what additional information we need to put into your considerations, your policy considerations. And that'll include evaluation as best we can for data that's available on, you know, what is affecting your environmental quality? What are the threats and what are your opportunities? And then the community will need to decide what kind of policy they have available to them or how they can coordinate with other agencies and state level of the government to resolve those problems in the future. So that is actually something we'll be talking about when we get to both conservation and the coastal elements. So we've been trying, already begun, I was assigning Andrew something new to inspect and collect data. We also have recently interviewed and chosen a wide group of engineers with specialties in different fields of engineering, some of which are specifically, are qualified to be dealing with environmental issues. We have environmental engineers and doing hydrology and other studies, structural, along the coast, things like that. We've talked to them when we were interviewing about the types of programs and concerns we had about the outfalls, living shorelines and other things that would help clean the water. So the staff as a whole has been working to try to beef up the resource we have available for collecting legitimate information and making some really strong plans for addressing your actual environmental and coastal conditions and what you want your policy to be. Obviously, we're limited to some extent because, for instance, we don't even have a boat. It's really hard for staff to get out and inspect anything along the water. So we do rely on the county and DEP for a lot of that kind of work, but we need to talk about that. How do we make referrals? How do we, we report? What kind of conditions are we looking to accomplish over time? One of the things that the city manager has been working on has been expanding the city limits to include open waters because we want to control for the livable boards because that has a big impact on quality of water. And so we're, we're working towards doing what we think we have available to us, but we will need the input of the community. They're gonna have to make a decision again about how serious is the threat? What are our options and what would it cost us to adopt certain kinds of policies or practices? That'll be part of the long range planning effort. And unfortunately, when you do your comp plan, you're not just thinking about what do we need to be able to afford right now, but, you know, where do we wanna get to over the course of the next 20 years and how do we build to that? If, if we can't do it all right now, what's our long range plan? And what are the incremental steps we need to get to, to make sure that happens by the time the 20 years comes up? And that, you know, it's probably gonna involve, it, it always involves also looking at budget and investment, what kind of programs the city can provide and what's available to them outside. At the same time, while we're going through all this, Jerry and Public Works, Jamie at Public Works and myself and Jay in particular have all been looking for new grant opportunities. And some grants you put in more than you get back out and you have to really be careful about. But we're trying to find grant opportunities that would allow us to address multiple areas of concern, especially environmental and structural concerns, sea level rise issues, things like that. And some of these things we already have under works. It'll help provide us with new information and just strengthen your ability to make policy and develop programs to start addressing those issues ahead of time. We can't really afford any more of letting things sneak up on us. You know, our, our time is up. All local communities really need, seriously, we're on the water. We really need to start making specific plans on how to address these issues. So those are all things we're gonna be working on.
This is kind of a question for Jerry and it circles back to the original.
Can you speak into the mic? We can't hear you.
This goes back to, to Jerry a little bit. The city is probably gonna be a few million dollars in the hole here. And when we look at our comprehensive plan, because it's gonna take a while to recoup that unless we raise taxes again. This is just
Right.
the thought process. So when we go back to your, to the comprehensive plan, when we have these discussions with the people, if we want this type of service, we need to raise the taxes to do this and this and this and this. Is that an assumption that it'd be likely?
Yeah. If, if you're talking about what the impact fees might be able to do, you know, impact fees, as the state stands now, and I'm, I'm hopeful that the legislature will recognize after this COVID pandemic that essential service personnel are part of levels of service in terms of impact fees, but currently that's not. So if you're looking for elevating services, you're looking at, you know, the general fund or grants or something other than impact fees. Impact fees are very much constrained at this point.
We don't have that. We are not gonna have that much influence from impact fees on future development within the city because we don't have that much development yet to come. Area, basically, unless people change.
You, you wouldn't want all of your plans to be riding on impact fees because it, it's, it's a function of how fast you develop, yes. And because what you collect needs to really be related to the real impact of those developments, not to something broader or something that was already a need. It has to be related to the incremental difference or impact that that new development makes. So, so it's one, it's one way to bring some funds in, but you're right.
I wasn't insinuating.
No, no, I know you weren't, but just.
The, the impact fees are gonna pay for this.
No, no. You were making the point it was.
It has to come from someplace else.
Correct. And also you have to keep in mind, even when we're doing grant work and stuff, that we're not the only coastal community with environmental needs and pressures and that there's limited funds that we're gonna have to compete with everybody else for. And that also keep in mind that this is a very tedious and exacting process grant. Usually people don't get grants the very first time they ask for them, so you have to kind of long range plan for, you know, this is our application this year and this is how much lobbying we put into it, all of which costs time and effort. And then next year, maybe we'll move up the list or maybe next year we'll get it. Sometimes you get small grants early, but if you're gonna look for something big, you're gonna have to work on it a while. Also, it requires a whole lot of coordination with other governments. The grants that you're more likely to get are gonna be those that are cooperative and involve more than one kind of program or more one government. So it's, it's a very involved process. A lot of communities have grant coordinators who just all day long are putting together programs, coordinating things, collecting data and following up on leads. It's not something that we can count on, as you say, as a budget item. It's something that you bring more money in for specific projects, but in terms of running the government and dealing with everyday issues, you have to find more consistent ways of paying for that.
Any other, Ray?
About before Jerry, still wanna circle back. I didn't get a really
All right.
chance to look at this when you were, when you were going over it. Actually, I'd like to ask, in the future, could this be provided when the agenda's provided so we can look at it and think of some questions prior? If that's possible.
Well, we're providing it for you tonight in, in looking forward to the July meeting. This was just an opportunity, since we could, to get up and kind of have the face to face and recall that we had this comp plan project and proportionate share development fee project that we were working on and now we're back. And hopefully, for, for a longer term.
Going over the topics here, though, my memory that the process for level of service was you were going to, you had other cities that you had worked with and you were gonna look at their level of services comparing to the level of service that we're currently providing and plan your report based on that. So I'm having a hard time following, maybe I'm the only one, that the level of services will be calculated by adding the asset values for the, your fixed assets and your expenses. I'm, I'm just having a hard time following that. Is, you're looking for, that's the expense? That's, that's what you're stating there?
For the comprehensive plan level of service, which is much more expansive than what you use as the basis for impact fees, because that includes the services, operation and maintenance, all of the things that it takes to deliver the service. In terms of the comp plan, we can have that. When we go on to calculate impact fees, the state has limited what impact fees can cover. Basically, they're limited to capital assets. And so we'll have that basis that we can use. And if the state changes its mind and decides to expand what they allow to be covered by impact fees, we'll have that information, that data and analysis in the comprehensive plan, in the data and analysis supporting the comprehensive plan so that we can utilize that. So I'm trying to capture the big picture for the comprehensive plan and then we'll have to, you know, curtail that to what's allowed by the state in terms of impact fees. Levels of service are measured a lot of different ways depending on where you are. Hillsborough County has opportunities to expand, like in the south and the east. Pinellas, not so much. Madeira Beach, not really at all. So we have to look at basically a snapshot of where we are today and that's our current level of service. And all of the things that we're doing and all of the, the stuff that's here, all of the building that's here. And as Linda pointed out, you know, most of the zoning districts allow three stories by right, but you're not built out that way. But you're moving in that direction in a redevelopment perspective. So what we wanna do is capture that increment of redevelopment. You have a thousand square foot cottage. I think I've used this example before. You have a thousand square foot cottage. You tear that down, you build a three story, forty five hundred square foot, you know, there's a different impact there. And that's what we're trying to analyze. Then based on what we're providing in services today, the costs of that capital, basically the, the fixed assets that are listed, you know, in the community. And, and those have not been updated in a while, so that's part of our, our data and analysis to find out. We're not even sure exactly all of the property that's owned by the city. We have the property appraisers information that provides, I think, thirty three different parcels, but only eight or 10 are captured in the fixed assets inventory that finance has. So that's one of the updates that we'll do and we wanna capture every possible thing that we can. So it's hard to compare sort of the other types of levels of service in the other communities. One of the communities along the island has impact fees, but they have no stuff. but they have no study to support how they determined them and they haven't done any updates. That's problematic in terms of the state if anyone were to challenge that. And my approach here is to make sure that you're as challenge-proof as possible. Not that somebody won't, but that if they do, their opportunity to prevail would be as minimal as possible.
Well, I think it's justified for the residents regardless. And I support that. I'm just trying to follow all your comments and understand your topics best I can. And you just made a comment that the state currently only allows impact fees to cover the fixed assets?
Capital expenses, capital expansion, so.
Are we talking about the assets of the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Not Gulf Boulevard.
Okay.
Not the Causeway.
But not the fixed assets of the residents?
No.
It's not, you know, because you're using the same thousand-square-foot home. You tear it down and you build 40, 4,500. But what if you take that thousand-square-foot home, you tear it down and you build another thousand-square-foot home, but it's FEMA compliant? That also, it doesn't really have an impact in my, my view. But based on where it's going, it sounds like it's, there's going to be an impact fee. And that's all to be decided.
No, if you have a thousand-square-foot existing, you tear it down, you build something FEMA compliant, you don't expand the footprint, that wouldn't, that would be a wash.
Okay.
But if you go from small to bigger, that's a larger impact. And particularly in terms of what I think will be your, is and will be your commercial redevelopment over time. Because I don't see very many commercial properties tearing down what they have and replacing it. They're looking for the maximum envelope they can have and then they're going to ask for variances for a little bit more if you'll give it to them, you know?
I follow that and I support. I think the commercial development in the, you know, personally, in the community needs to step forward and support the city better than it does. So, but regardless, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, but please, please go through it between now and July and any questions, you know? And if you want to email me, that's fine too. I think.
Sure.
Just, just don't email the other commissioners. Just in case, I have an abundance of questions. We're in a legislative aspect, so it's a little less problematic. But just as a good will measure, you know, please send something to me directly and I'll respond on, at the meeting in July. So it'll all be public record.
And on your, your second list there, we had actually talked to Lynda, it was probably our last meeting, that this is, this is where we're going. And so how best to reach out to the community? These are some things we've already discussed. And it's probably a combination of everything you have plus some town meetings, you know, individual areas.
We'll need to map that out because, you know, I mean, you can always meet more often than you do, but you meet basically once a month and so we have to work that in. Your evaluation and appraisal review is due early 2022. And so we're in the process of trying to schedule all of the different components so you can address the data and analysis and the elements and then address policies moving forward and get that all within the window of time. And I think that, you know, we're starting what some people might consider early, but I think we're starting right at the very good time to do a very thorough analysis, a thorough review and take that forward through the public hearing process.
I would agree. It's never too early.
And hopefully in July, we'll have at least a draft calendar for your consideration to look at what we're planning on doing and when we're planning on doing it.
Now, this 2002 report, that was the, that was the latest master plan that was done? Is that correct?
No, no, no. Your master plan has been updated in 2008 and 2016. But minor updates, the data and analysis, the background that describes the community and is the basis for your policymation, that hasn't been updated in 30 years.
And there's two terminological differences. You know, the comprehensive plan is what you adopt and go by. This master plan that the Duane Group did was in 2002. It has not been updated. It was never even adopted.
It's not adopted.
It was basically, it was completed, it was paid for and it was on a shelf. So we're trying to actually bring that into the policy document, the comprehensive plan, and utilize the work that was done so that it can inform your comprehensive plan.
Does the city have an adopted master plan?
Oh, yes. Your first, yeah, we have a comprehensive plan.
The master plan is different for legislative reasons.
More of a design, a master plan be kind of how you design the community and relates more to your land development regulations, your codes.
Now.
So our hope is through the process of evaluating and updating the comprehensive plan, the work that's in the master plan will inform that and whatever makes sense will bring that in to the comprehensive plan so that it actually becomes a policy document and not a pretty picture book, which is basically what it is now. I wasn't here.
Well, we weren't here.
I have no idea. You've had a number of turnovers politically, staff-wise?
Why were we referred to, that was, that was the attachment, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Why were we referred back to the 2002 if we have a 2010 and 2016?
Okay, well, if I can explain what Jerry was going through, the difference between a comprehensive plan and a master plan document? The comprehensive plan is a state-required document that complies with a number of specific requirements. You have to have policies on how you'll deal with, how you're distributing your land and zoning and land use, how much housing you're expected to permit, how many people you're expected to come in, what's your level of service is going to be on your roadways, how much facility level of service, like how many gallons of water are you expecting to use? And then you adopt policies to make sure you're providing all of those standards. The, a master plan is really a design document. What do you want it to look like? How wide do you want your streets detailed like that, you know? How many, how many feet of sidewalk? Or do you want your houses to be up close to sidewalk or further setback? It kind of informs how the city looks, how it, how each parcel interacts or how sections of the town interact with each other. It's a lot more detailed in fine-grained than you get in your comprehensive plan with the policy. The important thing is, though, that that policy document, the comprehensive plan, has to have enough policy in you and allowing you to adopt that master plan. You know, all of that detail, that, you need to have a policy that allows you to get that specific with people on how they're going to use their property. We all have a set of land development regulations that kind of implement the comp plan. It has to be consistent between the two things. But with a master plan, it's really finding a way, not only to decide what the setbacks are going to be on each individual parcel, but finding a way to figure out what's the whole community going to look like? How's it going to function together as a unit? How does the design of one area feed into the other? You know, so there's consistency, but also there's enough difference between one kind of use from one area to the next to provide for a variety of types of use and things like that. You have a broad policy that may say you want a wide variety of uses and you may say you want mixed-use development. But where you put it exactly and how you make it integrate with everything around it, that, that fine grain is something you would put in a master design-type plan, like the one that the Duane document did.
So the special area plan that's in our binder, that is strictly for the downtown area, what I'll call it here. That's more of a subset of the master plan.
It is, and you'll notice that in the master plan, there were several areas in town that they had very, you know, specific kind of mixed-use design and design set out for in terms of how the streets were going to work and where the parking would be and what the buildings would look like. One of those was this downtown area. And instead of using the design of the master plan, they came back with a special area plan that didn't, that did something different. So instead of adopting the master plan for the whole community or even adopting just the portion for the downtown, they kind of sidelined the whole thing and then came up with a less restrictive and less prescriptive design for the downtown. It didn't require the same relationship between buildings. It ended up not being as dense. It's an entirely different approach to the design for the downtown. And that special area plan was adopted after, like in 2008, I think. And then it was updated again in 2014 and 2016. Each, each time, though, it was, it was never anything like the original plan, the master plan as proposed by the Duane Plan. It was a lot more intense. It wasn't as high in terms of the building height. But it would have had actually more square foot development in it because the buildings were closer together and it created kind of sidewalk areas of building next to building instead of the wide open spaces. So he was going for a different approach to creating a real downtown setting, a place. Whereas what the current master plan or special area plan does is just kind of increase intensified development in this area and kind of allow it to more or less organically create itself without relating them all together to create one place. So it's a different approach. They just decided not to use the one approach and to go with something else. It was, I think, quite frankly, more in keeping with what usually happens. We can talk a lot about that concept, but, you know, downtowns that have grown up very quickly within the last 30 to 40 years have generally lacked that kind of cohesion that created a sense of place and at the same time, there's been a movement throughout the country to look back at the way things used to develop in the olden days when people walked places and didn't have to accommodate their cars everywhere. And to try to create that sense of place that we get when we go old neighborhood. When you go downtown and you can walk from thing to thing and there's a lot happening and there's interest in the place. And so what the Duane Plan was trying to do was before we redevelop, give you a sense for when you redevelop. If you do it this way, you'll actually create places instead of just locations where you have commercial. And they decided not to go that direction for some reason. And it's expensive. Some of the things that were proposed in the Duane Plan were really exciting, but they definitely would have required a lot of public investment for facilities and resource changes and things like that.
Lynda, I have a quick question.
I think Jerry wants to.
Just to clarify, as we go forward and we're looking at the master plan, the Duane Master Plan, think of that as a recommendation that has never been implemented. And that's the idea that we're looking at is what, what's in there that we like and how do we implement it? So we have to lay a foundation in the comprehensive plan that supports it and then ultimately land development regulations that enforce it.
So the comprehensive plan is basically a roadmap to how we get to, what we are looking to get to?
Yes, it enables.
Comprehensive plan is your legal roadmap.
Yes.
And it has the force of law. So if there's something in the comprehensive plan that prohibits something or requires it, it has to be done. Many comprehensive plans throughout the state, and I think I touched on this months ago, you know, use terms like encourage or discourage and that has no effect whatsoever. You can come up with language in your land development regulations that are stronger and actually do have requirements, but they don't have the force of law. Well, they do have the force of law, but the encourage and discourage, you know, don't do that, please.
No.
Okay, I don't, I'm going to do it anyway, you know? And so we avoid that language in, in the comprehensive plan. And generally, you know, we try and direct, when we have a good idea, like say we find things in the Duane Master Plan that we want to have requirements for, then the comprehensive plan creates the foundation by saying things like the land development code will. And, you know, then you lay that out generally and then the land development code provides the direct criteria, the actual code of development. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, it does. Thanks for taking the extra time and sticking around.
All right.
I have one quick question, real quick.
Robert?
The comprehensive plan is required by the state. And it has something like, you're going to have roads, they're going to be paved. You're going to have sidewalks here. The speed limits are going to be this or whatever the case may be. If you do not follow the comprehensive plan, is the city at risk from the state?
The city's at risk from almost anybody if you don't follow the comp plan because it's, it's like, it's a code. It's an ordinance. You adopt all of it by ordinance and you don't want to violate your own ordinances. And the citizens generally have the opportunity to appeal to the state, but also you're liable legally.
That's what I figured. I figured it was court-issued. So if you don't like what's in the comprehensive plan and you want to weaken it or strengthen it, then you do it by ordinance?
Correct. You have to go through a community hearing process and there are very strict requirements as to how you have hearing and advertising and keeping everybody involved.
Okay.
Can I ask one question too? You do a comprehensive plan to the state one time and you update it? Or do you have to update it every certain amount of time? What does Florida require?
We have to update it regularly. I wonder, are we at now seven years? We have to update every seven years now. And in addition to that, you have the opportunity to do other updates. You can do small updates several times a year or you can do major updates up to two times a year. But you have to go through a really rigorous hearing and advertising process every time you make a change. So generally, people try to avoid that. Usually, they make large land use changes when they have some major development coming through. We also have an obligation to be consistent or supportive of each other within Pinellas County. So we have to be aware of and coordinate with the county on things like our land use categories so that you don't, you don't want to, you don't want to chase development from one community to another by, by being too restricted one place or defining things differently in one place than you do in others. So we do have to go through Pinellas County's planning organization, send all of our reports up there and get approval and input from them as well.
But the master plan is just for your local?
It is, but if it has impacts, well, we, we would reference the requirement for master plans in the comprehensive plan because otherwise you can't do something in the master plan that, that in any way weakens or changes requirements of the comp plan. You can't use it for that person. It can define them more specifically, but it has to operate compatibly with it. It's enabled by the comp plan.
So how often do we update our master plan?
Well, hopefully not regularly. The whole idea would be that you have a kind of a long-term. You have to keep in mind that these things are living documents. You know, there's always a certain amount of change that you should be keeping up with because we're responding to changes in the environment and politically, economically, all the time. And so we do need to have a system of evaluation in the plan. It's required that you evaluate it regularly, make changes as necessary. So you don't want to be stuck. But the whole idea in doing a master plan or a comp plan is that you're looking long-term. It's not a plan for this year. It's a long-term plan. Now, if you've been on the planning commission for a while, you'll know that we come back every year and we ask you to look at capital improvements list. Those have to be updated every year. The element is supposed to then be updated as well and then sent up to the state so they keep track of what you're, what you're planning to build and to provide in order to meet those levels of services that you adopted in your comp plan. You have to be able to pay for everything that's in there or show what your plan is for paying for it long-term. If you can't pay for something, it doesn't matter what, all your plans in the world don't mean anything. So we have to think in terms, not only what are our demands going to be and how do we think they need to be met, but exactly how do we pay for it? And that, that payment can't rely on money coming from somebody else. We have to have a, we have to have a cost associated with anything we have to have to meet our standards and we have to have a plan for coming up with the money.
Thank you very much. Any other topics for open discussion?
Any other topics for open discussion? Ray?
Yeah, I have a topic. The crosswalks on Gulf Boulevard and the lighting over each. I think I didn't bring it up in this, in the Planning Commission, but I would like to propose that that be evaluated, because some of the areas where the crosswalks are, you're not going to notice it this time of year, but in the winter, someone will push the crosswalk, but you can't tell if they're actually in the crosswalk if it's after dark. And people tend to go through those crosswalks with their vehicles if they don't see someone, even if they are flashing. Now, some of them are located where there is lighting, but it's random. I know there's one or two that it's, there's no overhead light anywhere near it.
Yeah, the one out in front of Madeira Bay, on the north end of it, is really, really dark. You can't see anybody in the crosswalk. You can see the lights flashing, but there's no overhead light to see if there's anybody actually in the crosswalk on either side or the middle.
And it's pretty vague, because, you know, there was a family crossing at 132nd or 31st, whatever they call that one, and an ambulance was coming, and they thought they were going to stop, and the ambulance wasn't stopping, and they went right through while the family was standing there, and it was almost an ambulance hitting a family. And the ambulance went to, ironically, I walked over there, it was going to Pelican Lane where the fishing boats were, there were five sheriff cars, our fire truck, a... Yeah, it was four sheriff SUVs, a pickup truck, and the fire truck and that ambulance. All, I was like, man, you know, was there a bomb go off or something? And it was something with one of the fishing boats, and by the time I turned around and walked over there, they were all leaving. And I said, "What was the emergency?" And the sheriff just said, "Drugs." But they were all leaving, so I have no idea what happened with that. But it was like a big, major scene right there. But yeah, with those crosswalks, they don't really, you know, if the person's in there, what if they're in there and the light's not going on? You know, what if the light's going on, they're not in there, and then they're walking? So I know that's DOT. There is a good unintended consequence, and it does stop traffic, because I thought they were putting in too many, but it actually helps you if you're trying to get on Gulf Boulevard. So I don't know what we have control over them, but yeah, lighting was not a bad idea. Any other topics?
There was a bill in our state that they were talking about changing the yellow to red flashing. Has anybody heard anything about that?
They declined that, they shut that down. Because then it's a traffic light, and then you got to stop, and then if there's nobody in the crosswalk, you got to wait, and it was too confusing.
I'd like to make a motion, then.
To make a motion? If you'd like...
I'd like to make a motion that the Board Commissioners authorize that either the lighting be, overhead lighting be available for each crosswalk when it's activated, for the duration of the time it's activated, or constantly, either implement it or at least investigate it.
The county, or the city doesn't have the authority to do that, but what we should, maybe we could include that item in the previous motion while we're inspecting all of that traffic issue, and include it in there, so they can come back with a report to the commission of what the situation is, and then they can make recommendations to DOT based on that.
The problem with that is that your previous motion was from 31st down...
Right. We'll have to, you could probably make a new motion to add that on. Just do another motion to, as another program, project.
I would do it as another project, because it's simple and it could be acted upon quickly instead of waiting for study to be done on traffic patterns and whatnot. This is something that...
I need to just do an inventory of where the lights are and where they aren't.
It's a liability, I think, for...
I'll second that motion for discussion that the commissioner just made.
Let's go to the vote?
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Chairman Miloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Whiteback?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappo?
Yes.
Commissioner President?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any other topics for member discussion?
I have something, Mr. Chairman, just kind of, Linda's here and just filled with all this knowledge tonight. What's going on with all the developments in the city? Like, we looked at the schooner...
Yeah, we can't talk about those, they're going to come back to you. Those are all quasi-judicial.
I was just hoping to get some scoopers.
No scoop. You will be seeing those things show up on your agendas in the next few months.
All right. Well, if there's no other discussion, anybody? Then our next meeting is July 13th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is adjourned.